So we will go ahead and call this meeting back to order. We are reconvening after our recess from the August 28th special session for our budget preparation meeting here. So we'll have some updates. I know that we wanted to go over the revised draft 4B, and I think Mr. McKim will do a presentation on that for us. We'll look at our miscellaneous revenues as well, maybe get a kind of a overview, general overview of the status of our sheriff's contract. I believe we've got some new information now that we can begin to look at in terms of dollars and cents. And then we'll see if there's anything else that we need to discuss at that point. So, Ms. Shell, did you have anything else?
Um, no, the only thing that I did want to find out is if you wanted me to increase the council's budget to include the Wagner Erwin Shealy letter of engagement. It looks like that we will have approximately $3,000 to encumber in our contractual, um, which is not going to be nearly enough, but we currently have 25,000 budgeted for 2021. And I would like to ask to increase that to a total of 100 to include, because it's 98. And that would also for any travel, travel that they might have to, to do to get here.
When is the, when is the payment due on that?
They, they just submitted. I don't anticipate a payment until due, until next year. Because they typically, they keep, it is, they're normally, when they submit payments, it's normally several months in arrears. If, I just sent you a copy of their latest billing, which some of it was almost a year old. Yeah. So.
Okay.
Um.
Well, we'll try to do our best to get those bills submitted to us a little bit more timely for, for this particular project.
Okay, I can talk to them about that.
Yeah. In terms of, yeah, I think, I have no problem with adding that into the budget for council. For next, I don't know if anybody else would like to comment on that or not, but fine with me.
Should.
Okay. So yeah, go ahead and make that adjustment as well.
Okay.
Okay. Jeff, do you, are you able to share your screen for the 4B?
Yes, I can do that. Let me embiggen it. How about, now how does it look now?
It's great.
I can see it. Yeah.
All right. So this is basically what we already had last time, except I have filled in all the additional information we've received, which is basically that the auditor's office, Ms. Gregory has given us a spreadsheet that I think she sent out that filled in some additional missing information on the miscellaneous revenue estimates. And so I have entered all of those, all of those estimates on the appropriate miscellaneous revenue line. So that would be line three and line 13. So the numbers that I show right now should essentially align, should be identical to those on the estimates that the auditor's office has prepared. And of course, the budget estimate on line 15 is now, it matches the, the budget spreadsheet that Kim has been working on. Now, of course, we just a few minutes ago agreed to increase that number to accommodate the WIS contract. So that, that line 15 is going to be a moving target, you know, throughout the entire process. So where does that leave us? What that at least does tell us is that those, these operating balance percentages of the budget, you know, before they were meaningless numbers. Now, because we have all the miscellaneous revenue entered and everything, they're going to be much more accurate. Let me point out a couple of things. First of all, as you can see, the general fund operating balance is quite high, quite, quite a bit higher than I know the auditor's office has, has recommended. But essentially what that means is that we have substantial reserves in the, in the general fund. Now, there are reassessment in particular is negative. And we, you know, we've, we've all agreed that we don't want to use these other funds essentially as, as savings accounts, that we really just want to have, maintain our reserves in one place. So, you know, we don't necessarily want to maintain large operating balances in any of these other funds, but probably we will, we need to shift a little bit of the levy to the, to the reassessment fund, maybe to the aviation fund as well. But everything else looks very healthy, if not more than healthy. And I also kind of want to point, attend, call attention to the PS Lit Fund, which has an extraordinarily large operating balance. Basically, there's just a large cash balance from previous years that's built up in the PS Lit Fund that's unspent. And so we might want to consider, as we go forward, moving some public safety expenses from general into PS Lit, simply under the philosophy that we don't also want to maintain PS Lit as yet another savings account for reserves, and instead want to use that fund and then make sure that what we have left in, in general is the, is going to be our reserves, which we can then transfer to rainy day as we, as we wish. And the only other thing I guess I would mention about this and about our bottom lines, is that these numbers still use 90% of this, this year's lit for the lit estimate, which we, I think, I think that that could be a substantial underestimate. But I feel like at this point, that's the conservative approach is to go along with what the state says. Although the state did specifically say that local units are welcome to use their own methods of estimation because their estimate basically isn't a real estimate. So, so, so yeah, again, these, these bottom lines could be quite a bit better than even than they are right now, when that, when we get the actual lit information. So I guess I'll see if anybody has any comments or discussion. And I don't know if the auditor has any.
So we need to have Marty. Okay, yeah, I already have.
Okay, all right.
So I'll comment.
Yeah.
We will know the PS Lit revenue by mid-September. So, so probably not in time for our budget meetings, but definitely by the budget hearing.
Yes. Yeah, that'll be that first estimate that we all agree is usually a pretty good estimate, if, if not exact. Yeah.
Will, will we get that before advertising? Do we normally get it before advertising?
It'll be right around that. You would wanted to advertise, what, September 18th or 19th?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're supposed to get it September 15th. So it'll be close.
Okay. All right.
Are there any other questions? Auditor Smith, did you have any comments or?
Um, yes, I wanted to tell you that we never really use 100% of AV unless we, the net AV, unless we're doing rate control funds. That's recommended, is recommended by the Department of Local Government Finance to use a smaller number than 100%. And so that also gives us more buffer down the road. So there is multiple layers of buffers built in, and it's, it's meant to be designed that way. But I think I've told you guys the past two, three years on, on basically making sure our excess levy, not excess levy, I shouldn't, because that's a distinct thing. I should say our levy, extra parts of it are in the general fund, and that's how they're, that's how they're delineated here, and I'm very comfortable with that. If the general fund cash balance remains really high, then what I'll do is I'll spread that over a couple other funds so that we don't lose our max levy. The issue's going to be if the mayor does say we're going to get an increase in income tax, how that's going to affect this budget, but I'm closely watching that. And I'll get back with you if I find that I'm concerned about that putting us at even higher numbers.
Okay. Mr. Deckard?
So, one thing I just wanted to say, for the, for the public watching, and there's greater minds here with some, a little bit more experience with this, so correct me if I'm wrong on anything, but what we're seeing now is the, for the public that's living through the pandemic that is still very much ongoing is, you know, some more schoolchildren will start on Tuesday, and, you know, obviously the campus has affected everything. We're all going through this very much now. For people that are worried about revenues in the future, this is a healthy sign where we are now, in addition to the expertise over the years of building up rainy day funds, long before I came on the council, and for some of you that have that experience, that's very much the case, that we've got funds that have been set aside. Right now, things don't look as bad as maybe what they do in other communities, as that revenues play out, but we certainly will see that play out in, ensuing years, and having excess funds built up over that time will help us down that road. It might be, is there anything I'm not saying right about that, or that we should clarify for public watching?
I completely agree with what Counselor Deckard just said. We are, I mean, we certainly will see a revenue hit in 2022, and probably 2023, but this, we, we are in a good position, good fiscal position to be entering the pandemic economy.
So my question is about the, the operating balance percentages for aviation reassessment. And what, at what point do we, do we want to start talking about maybe reassigning some levy there? And what would be the appropriate amount?
I mean, personally, I would do that after we make all the budgetary decisions. That's, you know, after we go through the.
Getting ready to say, we'll do that after the budget hearings, because you're going to add some things to this budget and adjust. And there's no use in, in doing it now, because it's not, the four Bs will not look like this at the end. None of them will look like this, except maybe the rate control funds. So we will make sure that everything is well taken care of after you guys pick what you want your budget to be.
Good.
Most counties don't even do this ahead of time.
We're very fortunate.
Well, and one thing, if I could just add in here, it's, you know, I was looking at some things I'd been working on related to the county early in the year compared to something I was doing for later in the year. And if ever there was a year where things dramatically changed over time, this definitely is that time. I hope we don't have years like this a lot, but it does reflect that as we're, you know, maintaining county services, which do evolve over time, what the health department does now versus what they did a year ago, when they were doing a tremendous job, now they're responding to things even well beyond that. And I expect that that continues to change, meaning that we may have to make new decisions as we go, even as this budget is being created with, in conjunction with department heads and other officials, to reflect what the county needs. And the good news, good news is that the fiscal management that we've had over the years, again, long before I even walked in the doors to these meetings, means that we're in a position to be able to react to community needs. And I take a lot of heart from that as we look at this. And I'm grateful to previous councils and other, and departments and elected officials that got us in that position, because I know that not other, not all communities are there. And it gives us a good starting point for the future days.
And let me add that in addition to planning that has put us in this, a strong position. We are lucky to have been able to submit over $500,000 of reimbursements to FEMA already, and have more in the works. So we do anticipate getting every penny back. Right now, our philosophy is to turn everything over to FEMA first to get the 75%, and then, then the 25% remaining turned to cares, so that we, we are leveraging our reimbursements. You know, I don't want to leave any, any dollars on the table, because I have to look out for the taxpayers of our county. We want to make sure that, you know, all of our people paid state income tax and federal income tax, or federal taxes. We want to make absolutely sure that we're pulling all that into Monroe County and, and using every penny we can from outside sources. And that's what we're going to do.
Well, and that's, that's important to point out, just because in particular, we've talked about our rainy day fund as, as a source of reserves, not, not, probably not for 2021, but for potentially 22, 2022. Great. And, but we've also appropriated some of that, but I think what we're hearing is that what we've appropriated out of that for relief will all be reimbursed. And so essentially, that rainy day fund will not be, not have been touched.
I'm literally trying to get every penny back.
And that doesn't even, you know, play into this, this particular spreadsheet, but it does, it is important for, for the next year and going forward.
Great.
Is Counselor Hawke on?
I believe she is. I don't know that her video's on, though.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. I was doing constituent services. There's something going on over there in the Richland Township that needs addressing. And so I didn't want to interfere here too much, because I didn't hear the first part of the presentation.
Okay.
I just hope that we remember that we've been advised to do this at a three-year lookout period, so that we don't, don't think that this is like, yes, we are doing really well right now today, but we have to take, save that back for '22 and '23. Is that, did you already discuss that portion of it?
And you're exactly right, Marty. And the, and revitalizing that rainy day fund with our reimbursement, reimbursement strategizes that three-year plan, and, and anticipates needing that money in the future. And that's certainly what we're preparing for.
Well, and, and just the, with the operating balance looking very high, we had to figure out what it's going to look like in, in, at the end of 2021, '22, and '23. We can't act like we've, we have extra dollars this year, because it's, that's not what's going to happen. We need save back for those years coming up.
Well, and that's why I was proposing moving some expenses into the PS, from general to PS Lit, to reduce that operating balance, and instead create a greater operating balance in general, which we could then transfer some of that into rainy day.
Yeah.
We don't, yeah, we really don't know what's going to happen with any of this till state gets through with this, or the city gets through with it. So.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Munson?
So, hearing our auditor speak about the city income tax proposal, I'd like to hear more about that. I believe she has the, the numbers to make some calculations. If that, if this passes, it will be in October, I believe.
And we'll, and we'll start receiving money in January, so it will affect this budget.
Right. And, and I'd like to know how we can best put this money into our funds.
Well.
So would it come into, would it come into general?
No.
No, it's, okay. So, so a lot's going to depend on exactly what they do at the city. And next week, while we have the budget hearings, they're going to be, they're going to be working on it. And so I think right now, it's kind of premature to guess what they're going to do, when we'll know what they're going to do next week, and we just can discuss it.
Yeah.
So I think that, that maybe the prudent thing is be to wait a couple days.
Great.
Does everybody agree? I mean.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm still opposed to this. I don't know how everybody else feels about this, but I'm, I do not want to treat it as a done deal. And I'm, I'm still going to continue to speak out.
Oh, you mean on the, the lit increase?
Yes.
During a pandemic? Yeah. Yeah.
Imagine that.
I, you know, and I have not said very much, other than, you know, well, I think, in the Herald Times, I think I answered in a candidate survey in, in the spring, but we are in a pandemic. And I don't think that can be lost on people that are making decisions about children at home, children going to school. Our unemployment rate is, I think it's at 6.1 right now, down from 10.8, but it was at 3.1 in March. We've got people that are hurting. And that is what that is. And so I, I just, I, I have trouble losing sight of those massive pieces of wood that are in my eye on that. And I, you know, I want to do, add my voice on that to that discussion. I respect the city having a discussion. But again, I think we've all talked about reform that needs to happen, so jurisdictions make decisions for jurisdictions, and Elsville for Elsville, and Bloomington for Bloomington. We're, we all in that PS Lit process talked a lot about community making decisions countywide, for looking at each other. But this is a good example where jurisdictions, if they wish to proceed for their constituents, it would make sense. So there's a, there's a whole host of issues there associated with that.
Well, well, well said, guys, because I'd hate to have to do a lot of 4B models, and then just throw them away, because it, it didn't happen. So it just makes sense to, if it does come to fruition, we can talk about it, you know, next week and look at.
Okay. Sounds good.
Uh, Councilmember Hawke?
Yes. And I would really hesitate to weigh in on how we think we might use it, because that is going to make it appear that we really support this and want to use this. And I would hope that we, as a county council, will not be supporting an increase in tax to our residents who are many of them struggling out there right now, trying to make sure they can buy groceries or, or make the house payment. And many of them have had a reduction in revenue in their household funds. And this is just, it would just be a very sad day if we would say, well, on top of that, we're going to stick you with more tax. Just a sad day.
Yeah, and I'm very astonished at the, how rapid this process is taking place with the city. And I believe their first session to discuss this will be at 7:30 PM on Wednesday. Well, we'll be in a budget hearing at that point. So we won't be able to weigh in personally during those meetings. And then a vote, I believe we just received from the clerk of the city, they have informed us that they intend to consider the resolution on September 16th, I believe. So just about a week later. As Mr. Deckard mentioned earlier, the, the unemployment rates, yeah, we've seen some drops in the unemployment rate, which is a good thing, but the unemployment rate is a little deceptive, because as we know, we have huge, major employers here in Monroe County, including Indiana University, I just read, is starting to furlough employees because of drops in revenue. We've seen other major private businesses in the community who have had to reduce salaries by as much as 20%, is what I've understood in some cases. And that's just the two most, most major employers in the county there, too. So we know there's so many other employers that have struggled through this, may not have, you know, fully laid people off, or people have lost their jobs, but they've certainly lost income that they were dependent on prior to all of this happening. So this increase in income tax would only take additional income away from folks who really, really need it right now, more than ever, in a, in a public health crisis like we've never seen in the last hundred years in this country. Anybody else with any questions or comments?
Well, I'm glad you brought up the, the timing on the, on the tax vote. It really, it is being rushed. And I, I can't believe that, you know, that it's basically being scheduled for two weeks from when, when the mayor first asked for it. And I think this is, does not give the, the public adequate opportunity to understand the full use and impact of this, of this tax.
Yes. Can I add something to that? I, look, I think it's noble, and I think we all have consistently said this, for communities to have discussions about what they want their future to look like, whether that's around sustainability, transportation with transit, racial justice, housing, et cetera, those are extremely noble. We all have to do that. I think you have to have a discussion on what you will do with a program and funds that the public has time for, and the public with its attention a little bit distracted right now, as they're literally trying to log on to a, an on-course module, or deal with getting ready to go back to school. I think you have to have serious public time for the public to understand what's going on, and a stable proposal that emerges over time. And we clearly don't have that. I do appreciate good intentions by people to get things like that, but this is just not the time.
Uh, Councilmember Munson?
Yes, I wonder if there's interest among council members in making a statement to our city colleagues prior to their vote, and just to express our concerns.
The.
They'll probably ignore it, but that's okay.
Well, I've certainly have been making some statements, one-on-one, but I would be hoping if there's more, you know, if we want to do something more collaborative among the council. Ms. Hawke, did you have a comment?
Might we ask our legal, Margie Rice is here with us today, if we could make some kind of a statement today? Let's see, how, how many are we on to?
We have one, one.
But we could, I mean, we, we've pretty much, I think everybody here has shared concern. I didn't, I'm not sure I heard from council member, well, but I think I was hearing from everybody else. But I think we should let the city know officially, officially, not just the one-on-one, but as a group, do we support raising this income tax this year, just in the midst of this whole problem?
You certainly could. You could delegate today to a member of the council to work with staff to develop the written sentiment, and pass that along to, to the city council and to the mayor. That's something, if you voted.
Public. It's the public.
Sure.
We want, we want to make sure they understand where their county council that represents, they have, every member of this council has our own constituency, but every person who lives in the city of Bloomington has a county council member who represents them as well. So we need to make sure that the public understands where their county council representatives is on this, because a lot of local folks who live in the city of Bloomington are not wanting this extra tax.
Yeah. And, and, you know, one of the things, somebody mentioned it earlier, I mean, the date of, or sort of the timeline that has been chosen for this process at the city is not, there's, you know, there's nothing in the state law that says you have to do this by September 16th. My guess is that the mayor might be looking sort of backwards and saying, if I want this to take effect January 1, 2021, how, you know, and then does a timeline backwards from there, trying to get a vote done before the end of, you know, October. But my guess, my guess is that that's just a, you know, an arbitrary date that they picked, based on when they want the tax to take effect. But it is that they're not, the city of Bloomington is not required to meet. They're not, the city of Bloomington is not required to meet on that legally.
Ms. Rice, I think you're exactly right that they have counted back. I know that the B-Square Beacon has done some reporting on the dates and the statutory requirements. And that's, it certainly seems like that's exactly what they're trying to do is to make sure it can happen by October 31st, which then lets the tax go into effect January 1st.
Yeah.
I'm perfectly.
Yeah, well, part of what you might want to put in your letter, I think, up to you, and if you want to delegate to a staff member to work with us to do it, is just to be very clear and transparent with the public that this is not, we wouldn't certainly want anybody in the public to be misled and think that this had to be done at this timeframe because the statute required. There is, there's a lot of discretion, there's flexibility. This conversation could take place anytime this year, anytime next year. Nobody's feet are being held to the. And that may be a message that you guys need to get out there because I'm not sure that that message is being sent by the city.
Well, and the mayor has expressed the sentiment that he believes that the General Assembly is going to change the rules on lit, which could very well be the case and that that's also driving the timeline. But I think trying to beat the General Assembly is a bad strategy. It's been done before and it has not turned out well.
No, it didn't. Councilmember Munson?
Yes, I just want to correct a point that I think is very important. And that is every resident of the city of Bloomington has four county council representatives that speak for them. And the three at large plus one from their district. And the same goes for Elletsville. They have one person in their district plus the three at-large members. So I know that councilors McKim, Deckard, and myself take our at-large responsibilities very seriously.
Very much. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? On, I was not expecting to get into the.
This wasn't on the agenda, right?
Discussion, I think, for County Attorney Rice. I'll be in touch. And we can talk about, do we need to do any kind of like official acknowledgement of this?
Would be good if you guys would, somebody would put on the table and you'd vote to prepare a written statement about the county council's position on the local income tax increase, delegate to the council president to work with staff to prepare that written statement.
Oh, I'll move that action.
Okay. We have a motion.
And then you can certainly vote on.
Okay, second. Did you second Kate?
I did.
Okay.
Certainly preview it and vote for it on Tuesday if you would like to vote for the actual language.
Yeah.
And I.
That's true.
And I wanted to just make a point on, I know councillor, councilmember Iverson is not here and the council was extremely lenient and kind to me as I came in from a classroom and joined our PS Lit discussion a week ago. This is also an important thing for the county. And I recommend that if we can hold a vote until he's able to participate, I think that that, he probably would appreciate that.
Is he on his, is he on his way?
I don't know. That I don't know, but I think, I think we could do some prep work. And then I'd recommend a formal vote.
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday. All convened, yeah.
Well, I thought that's what we were doing, we were all voting to say, let's do it on Tuesday.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second on councilmember Munson's motion. Do, we can do a roll call vote now and get that official.
Yep, yep, hold on just a second.
Nobody knew we'd be doing votes today.
All right, councillor. Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor McKim?
Yes.
Councillor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
And you want to read what that motion was? It wasn't to have it prepared to have on our agenda for approval? Is that what the motion was?
Yes, to have staff prepare language to present on Tuesday.
Right, yes.
Yes.
It'll be me working with staff as the delegate.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll keep everybody fully updated on that. Was there, getting back to other budget items, do we have any more update that we want to discuss with miscellaneous revenue? Yes, councilmember Hawk?
Yes, I know that someone's been looking at this revenue and budgets for the income, for the innkeeper's tax. And I appreciate some of the information we've received. I saw the total budget was going to be more than $3 million, but it didn't really, I mean, and I can see that the revenue for the innkeeper's tax is drastically down. But I know there was other revenue that comes in to help make that budget. And I try to think it's like the convention center operational revenue would normally be helping out that budget, but of course, that's not be where it was. And the debt is over $600,000 that has to be paid. That's a part of that 300, that 3 million something. I don't know how much of the rent, oh, there's Peter there now, because that's, I do, because we've been talking about that. So anyway, I don't know how much of the rent is actually coming in on the different units. So I would like to see some kind of a official financial statement put together, very similar to like what we're accustomed to looking at for county general or something, so we can see how much cash they actually have. And, you know, where they think their revenue is going to be. Because I don't see how we could move forward with the budget that's being presented as it's being presented.
Well, can I address that?
Yes.
Obviously, we're going to have to have input from those groups regarding revenues. However, the food and beverage tax can be used for a variety of things. And one of the things is, you know, we could augment their budget with food and beverage tax money if that's what you guys would want to do. So that is, that is an example of how you could help them out if we find that they cannot pay their bills.
Well, but that's not our decision, of course. That's the Food and Beverage Advisory Commission. And so, anyway.
I saw Ms. Munson's hand first, and then Mr. McKim?
Yes, I too was concerned about the decrease in innkeeper's tax and of course, the decrease in revenue from convention center operations. And this was mostly regarding debt service that is required of us. And so I had a back and forth discussion with Mike McAfee of Bloomington. And he assured me that they had studied multiple scenarios as to how they need to budget. And the one that looks most likely is a 25% decrease in their operating expenses overall. But that there should be sufficient funding to cover debts. And I just would toss this immediately to councillor Wiltz to see if she would affirm this.
So yes, I've actually reached out and am hoping to get something on paper. Unfortunately, the timing of our meetings is such that the latest information that I have is from June, and we did not meet. And we were scheduled to meet the week after next. So I will share with you as soon as I can any of the updates on. And I can attest that even in June, we were looking at multiple scenarios projecting out and then prioritizing debt service. So, you know, all of that is exactly true. And I'm hoping to get some updated versions of those things, and I'll send them to you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McKim, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, the CBC is very well aware of the revenues and of the responsibilities and of the need to prioritize the debt. That, you know, Mike Campbell knows this like the back of his hand and will clear, I have no doubt that CBC representatives will be there when we hear their budget at the budget work session. So we'll be able to talk about this. But I mean, none of this will come as any surprise to them. As councillor Wiltz said, they have been talking about multiple scenarios and they know what our responsibilities are and they fully intend to meet them. So I have full confidence that they have thought this through.
Yes, councilmember Hawk?
Yes, I just hope that they don't wait until then for us to try to follow along because that's not the right time to present new information. So they need to send in advance how it is they plan to make, not just this, you know, finish out this year, but a couple of years out, where are we going to be? What is their projections? Because we can't, we can't just vote in the blind on this. This is too big. And I have always just said, you know, whatever they bring to us, I've always just been so supportive of because they, it's always been, we pay the debt first, we live on what's left. But this is a different time and we have got to know exactly where these numbers are. So showing up the day of when we're supposed to be making a decision is too late.
I'm wondering if, I know councilmember Munson had said that there would be a, they were looking at a 25% reduction in their operating expenses. Has there been, councilmember Wiltz, do you know of one of the other options as well is to supplement some of the shortfall with food and beverage dollars and to get that approval from the Food and Beverage Advisory Commission?
That was not being discussed when we had our last meeting, no.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I want to point out that the budget workshops next week are not the budget hearings. These are also pre-budget work. I know we're calling this the pre-budget meetings, but the way our county council does it is we kind of act like these are the hearings. Yes, you guys take votes, but you'll have other times that you can change it down the road. We just have a couple of days to the, a couple of workdays until they come in and actually talk about their budget. And I just can't imagine them getting numbers together between now and then. Kim, what day do they come?
No.
I believe that's on the Friday, the 11th.
And also, I know that Mike Campbell has gotten a lot of this already because he's been working on it. So, and I'm sending him another email right now and I will, you know, I'll make it clear. I'm not asking him to come up with a whole new thing because I'm pretty sure he's got the stuff and we just need to see it rather than hear it.
Well, thank you. Ms. Hawk, did you have another?
Yes. It's just recently that we've been told that IU Athletics and all of that, that really brings in the money into that innkeeper's tax is going to see a big change. So I expect that the people who are making the projections for the budgets will have, have to make a big change, just like IU is making a big change. You know, this is, this is something new and different. We've never had to do, look at these things before. So I just, just, I know that he had this all worked out a few months ago, thinking what the projections were, but everything was turned up on end. This last few months are not going to be anywhere near where he thought they were going to be. So thanks, everyone, for listening.
Thank you. Michelle?
The convention. Okay, sorry, the convention center is scheduled for Friday, September the 11th.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll be awaiting some additional information there, but that will all be helpful as we prepare for their budget session on next Friday. Any, are we, do we want to conclude that discussion on the convention centers?
Is Peter on? Because it's saying, can we let Peter in on the chat? Are you on there, Peter?
Yes, he's here.
I'm here, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for letting me be a little party here, folks. You know, life is impacting all of us, so I appreciate you understanding, but I'm here.
Yes.
Well, I just wondered, because we just voted on something a minute ago, that he might want to be a participant of that if we want to.
That's because I.
You know, we'll have the opportunity to vote on it on Tuesday. I don't necessarily, I want to make the best use of our time here because we're all, it's over the lunch hour and I know people have things to do going into holiday weekend. In terms of, I know we've got some additional information on the sheriff office contract. And I was hoping we could just get a very general kind of overview in terms of dollars. And I think County Attorney Jeff Cockrell is here and was just hoping he could kind of provide some detail, general details on how things are shaping up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, I can kind of give you a basic thought of where the negotiations are and what we're talking about. Actually, you should have gotten a spreadsheet that kind of outlined some of the more intricate issues. But I think one of the three areas, three to four areas that we are looking at currently, and we'd love to get some feedback from the council, are education pay, as in, do they have a two-year, four-year or master's degree and giving them a $500,000 or $1,500 compensation for those items? Another is that the field training officers, we were going to reduce the number from 12 to 10, but increase the compensation to $1,000. And I think that's something that, those are both things that the commissioners are very supportive of. The other two involve salary. And if you recall, the last time we did this, and clearly some of you won't recall this because you weren't on the board then, we studied three different counties to kind of try to gauge where the market was at for the sheriff's deputies. And so the spreadsheet you have is reflective of that as well as there's a thought from the officer's side that the compensation for the supervisors, the sergeants and lieutenants, given how our salary grids are and that, that they, there are situations where there's either no or not much compensation differential between the person that's being supervised versus the supervisor. And so there's a couple of different scenarios on that spreadsheet that would lend to that. I hate to give a round number because I talked with Mr. McKim this morning and the, what I used as the baseline number was the 2020 budget number. And I think we need to, and I think Jeff pointed out that that's reflective of 27 pays versus 26 pays. And so I'd hate to throw out a number right now because I, I think it would be misleading, if not inaccurate, depending on how you're looking at it. So I'd hate to throw out that, that big round number. I can tell you, the education thought would be roughly $18,000 plus FICA and those kind of things. $18,000 plus FICA and, and those kind of things, as well as the, really the, the change of the full-time, the, the field training officer is, is probably less than $2,000. Again, until you add some of those FICA and Medicare things, just because the number changes both ways. There's less officers that would be qualified for that, but they would be making just a little bit more. So does that give you a summary of where we're at? And do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Any questions, Mr. McKim?
And I'll just mention that I cleaned up the Jeff spreadsheet a little bit and adjusted it for the, to, to get rid of the effect of the 27th pay. And I sent it back to Jeff and Margie to review and made a few other modifications. So if, if you guys agree with that or want to change it further, please send it out to the, the, the rest of the council. That should give a more accurate picture of the, of the overall fiscal impact.
We sure will. And one of the things I'd like to point out is I did send that, your updated spreadsheet to Kim. And we'll want to probably factor in some amount in the advertisement. And I'll talk with Kim about that. But assuming that you're going to, you know, want to take some action on the sheriff's deputies contract, we want to make sure that there's room, there's enough room to do that.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Cockrell, for that update. That's very helpful. And I'm sure there'll be several of us who are in touch in the coming days.
Sounds great.
Great. Thank you. Okay. That really pretty much covered everything that, that we had planned on talking about today. Are there any other items that other council members would like to raise at this time? I don't have any. Ms., go ahead. Ms. Smith?
There we go. Couldn't get it off. I have something small. I wanted to invite council members to come and sit during the budget hearings with me in the big council conference room and watch on the overhead, if you would like to do that. I know some council members are worried to have sketchy internet, internet connections and things and worry about maybe missing some of the hearing or some of the budget workshops. So if you feel like that, you would like to come and do that, there's plenty of room to social distance. And you're obviously very welcome to do that with us.
Okay, thank you for the invitation. That's helpful. And I, Ms. Ridge, did, did you have any comments that, that you wanted to make? I saw you had your hand up earlier.
I, I don't. I just was here to listen to keep up.
Okay, okay.
I didn't mean to raise my hand, so sorry about.
No problem. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, are there any council comments before we adjourn? Go ahead.
Is this, am I going to anything or just having to do?
General comments.
So I can say, what, what, okay. My constituent service, can I talk about what just happened? What, okay. Especially for those of you who, who are at large. There's going to be a BZA meeting for the Ellisville because there's a proposed additions. I really don't have all the information in front of me, but there's going to be a proposed zoning change with the neighbors, right on top of where this is supposed to be happening. We're very concerned about it. It's all happening so quick and people were not aware of it. And they just got the letter saying that this BZA thing is going to be taking place. You might want to check it out to see if it's something that you have an interest in to see what's, what's being planned for where the, that big property is on Union Valley Road.
So this is a town of Ellisville Board of Zoning Appeals?
It's a Board of Zoning Appeals. It'd be a Zoom meeting. And of course, a lot of people really don't know how to, you know, get involved with Zoom meetings. And so it might very well be that, I, I mean, I was asking questions today and for which there was no answer exactly at the time. So, and if the decision's supposed to be made on Wednesday, and here we are in a holiday weekend. Just, I hope they'll table it. But I'm just sharing that because this might be my only chance to really get the message out.
Okay. Well, thank you for the, for that update. Any other comments from council members? All right. Well, I look forward. Thanks, thanks, everybody for joining us. I really look forward to next week. I think we're going to have, I feel very prepared and I think we've got a lot of good data in front of us to make some informed decisions at this point. So thanks to everybody for all of their work. Councilmember McKim, Kim, Megan, Margie, thank you all for, for the help and getting us prepared with all this. I know there's still a lot to go that you'll be getting ready for us for, for next week. But looking forward to a successful rounded budget discussions next week and hope you all have a great holiday. We'll talk to you soon. We're adjourned.